All right, good morning. We are here for our Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Meeting. It is Wednesday, May 5th, Cinco de Mayo. Oh, wow. What a great day that is. 2021 Board Session. It's 9:00 AM. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street. And as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Been kind of one of those mornings. Feel a little rushed getting here today. Left Detroit at 7:35.
Traffic?
You know, I got stopped in that one spot there, Minto Park, where they're all... Yeah, it wasn't too bad. So, but yeah, it's been one of those mornings. So, I just need to take a deep breath and look out there at all those smiling faces.
We made it.
And we have public comment. Today is our first item. And David Bean is here. David, if you would like to come up and make comments, it'd be our pleasure to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to talk about this State Fair. I'd like to have more agencies involved, come to State Fair, and families, too. And the people coming in Oregon can come and have a good time before the State Fair, listen to different music, and eat, and have a good time. I'd like to see this done. More people in the different districts would come and watch the State Fair. Make it open for everybody, for the families.
Great. Thank you, David. I know I serve as the Chair of the Oregon State Fair Council Board, and I know we are working, moving forward as if we are going to have a fair. It'll look different, but we'll do all those things that you've mentioned.
And I will work for you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you. And I know our county fair is trying to move forward, too, trying to work out with Salem Health how we're going to do the whole balancing that.
I think it would work well. It would work out well. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay. Thanks for being here. Have a great day. Enjoy this last beautiful weather out there because it's going to turn, and we're going to get some good rain that we need, hopefully.
Is it July, Detroit Lake?
Yeah, it's coming up a foot a day.
Well, I had a question that I'm asking. I need an ID because I go on my meetings for the county. I need an ID for doing stuff or disability stuff. ID for the county. That's all I need. Get in and out.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we have a... It came through Commissioners@email, a... Somebody who wanted us to read this into public, into public comments. It's regarding... It's from Terry Lynn Anderson under General Comments, Department of Public Works. Says, "Sir, the dam was a good idea." I believe this is... I'll just read it, and then we'll make sure that we understand what it is. "Sir, the dam was a good idea then and served the community well. I would suggest, if anything, improvements, not destructive construction that will harm the environment. I have always enjoyed that section of highway and do not think changes to improve speed, transit, time, or convenient place to spend tax dollars is any benefit to the community. I think the money better spent on enforcing speed and weight limits that protect the whole community is much better expenditure of limited funds. I request this statement be read out loud and into the record as I was... I am unable to attend in person. Sincerely, Terry Lynn Anderson, Woodburn, Oregon." So, I'm not sure this... Her phone number, 503-944-9596. So, I'm reading that into the record. And I believe the dam was a good idea. She's probably talking about the Scotts-Mills Dam.
Probably.
But the...
I think it says right there, Scotts-Mills Bridge at the top of the subject.
Scotts-Mills Bridge. Okay. Oh, the Scotts-Mills Bridge. Where is Commissioner Brentana when I need to say something about it? Welcome, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Good to have you. We're having fun already, so if you're here, we can be serious.
Okay.
Katrina, I see you out there. Presentation. Welcome. COVID-19. What's that?
Thank you. Katrina Rathenberger, the Public Health Division Director with Marion County Health and Human Services. As of today, May 5th, we have 59 new cases today and a total of 21,516 in the counties since the beginning of the pandemic with an 8.5% positivity rate. 303 people have died. For the last two-week period of April 18th through May 1st, there were 1,146 cases, which was 329.5 per 100,000, and a 9.2% positivity rate. This was a 10% increase over the previous two-week period, which was April 11th through April 24th. And the bulk of the cases are coming from the central Salem, northeast Salem, Brooks, Kaiser, and south Salem zip codes. In an interesting turn of events last night, we received information from the Governor's Office that Marion County, along with 14 other counties in the extreme risk category, will be moving down to high risk on Friday. In total, 24 counties will be in high risk, four moderate, and eight at lower risk. And a complete list of these, the counties' risk levels can be found on the Governor's website. This means that restaurants and bars can once again open indoor dining and services. This change is happening because the statewide seven-day average increase for hospitalized COVID-19 patients dropped below 15%. And there are two metrics that the state must meet in order for the extreme risk level to be triggered, which is an increase in over 15% and over 300 hospitalizations.
For this week?
For this day.
Good job.
Yes. It's... Anyway.
Well...
I don't think she's done.
I'm sorry. I do want to be serious about this, but this has been absolutely...
Ridiculous.
...craziness. But there are people who are still sick, and we need to...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It is difficult for us in public health and at the county to continue to track the changing metrics, which makes it difficult. So, that's why I was... You know, it was... I did not expect that news last night. But certainly, we are still concerned about people who are ill and people who are in the hospital. The number of people that we're monitoring in the hospital has gone down over the past few days. So, we're currently monitoring 43 folks in the hospital right now, which is lower than the past week. So, that is good. And then another piece of hopeful news is in Marion County, we have... Of the total population in Marion County, which is 347,000 people, 37% of folks have had at least one dose of the vaccine. And of the eligible population, which is right now is 16 and over, 13% have had at least their first shot, and then another 34% are fully vaccinated. So, about 47% of our eligible population, which are 16 and over, we do anticipate that 12- to 15-year-olds will become eligible for the Pfizer vaccine early next week. So, we're already talking with our partners on how we can ensure that 12- to 15-year-olds have access to the vaccine, understand... Helping parents understand that they need to come with their children and bring them if they want the vaccine. And appointments are available in our community. You can call 211. Visit our website at covid-19.mchealthy.net to find a clinic. The Salem Fairgrounds is also offering a walk-in vaccinations with no pre-registration. So, there are appointments available. You might have to look around. And the one thing that we've been hearing lately is if you've had the COVID, or if you think you've had it, some folks think they may not need the vaccine. But immunity from being fully vaccinated against the COVID-19 lasts longer and is stronger than natural immunity from the virus, is what we've been able to... Scientists have been able to determine right now, is that the vaccine immunity lasts longer. And then on... I think this was also this week. The CDC updated their guidelines detailing activities that vaccinated people can safely resume, including attending small outdoor gatherings without the need to wear a mask. And new recommendations say fully vaccinated individuals can engage in some activities without wearing masks, like walking, running, hiking, biking outdoors. The risk outside is very minimal. Attending outdoor gatherings with other fully vaccinated family and friends, attending outdoor gatherings with a mixture of fully vaccinated and unvaccinated people, dining at outdoor restaurants with friends from multiple households, attending crowded or outdoor events like a live performance parade or sports event, but masks are recommended in that setting. And then just a reminder that fully vaccinated means two weeks after your second dose of the Moderna or Pfizer, or two weeks after your first shot of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. We have seen an increase over the previous two weeks in 20- to 29-year-olds getting COVID, and want to encourage younger folks to get their vaccine. Helps protect not only yourself, but those around you that you love and care about. So, there are appointments available. You just have to look. I encourage people to look at the fairgrounds. There's also a number of mobile and vaccine pop-up events happening around our community as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And for those younger people, you said 20 to 29?
Yes.
They have to be 21, but I saw Gigglemesh posted, "Bring in your shot card and they'll give you a free beer." So, there's some incentive out there for younger people to go get their shot.
It's like a great marriage.
Huh?
Vaccines and alcohol.
Well...
It sounds like a great marriage.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. But I mean, but that's the kind of thing that I think will get people's attention, and not just that. But I know employers are trying to pay for people to go get vaccinated, doing some incentives and stuff. So, we just got to keep it going. Katrina, thank you. Thoughts, comments?
I'm just excited that when they say young people, I'm not in the category anymore. It's the first time since I've been a Commissioner.
You're happy to be old?
Well, Commissioner, we have a proclamation that I'm going to have to declare conflict of interest.
Thank you, Katrina. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, as I said, we have a proclamation coming up under Board of Commissioners. Consider approval of a proclamation designating the month of May as Older Americans Month in Marion County. Commissioner, this has your name by it.
It does. And I'm proud to be the representative of the Board of Commissioners for the Northwest Senior Disability Services Board of Directors. I have a deep passion for older Americans, but in my household, we call them elders. I was raised by many in this community, and so I feel privileged today to be able to not just present this proclamation, but also to introduce Marilyn Daly, who's the Executive Director from Center 50+. And then she's brought some guests with her, and I'm just going to introduce them. Linda Schellenberg is the President of the Friends of Center 50+, and her husband, Lyle, is that right, are here. And then Kristi Bowman is Volunteer of the Year and a Board Member for Center 50+ and the Secretary. And so, I just have a little speech before the proclamation, and then Marilyn has some things to share.
Great.
So, thank you. If 2020 and the global pandemic taught us anything, it's that we have to protect our most vulnerable populations. Chief among those most vulnerable are older Americans here in Marion County. While our students, businesses, places of faith, recreational opportunities suffered during the pandemic, our older American population was isolated much more harshly than almost any other demographic. Great-grandparents and grandparents were asked not to spend holidays with family. Some have still been unable to embrace the newest members of their families. In many cases, families were forced into a digital space and lost the benefit of direct human interaction. Sadly, many did not have the means to even do this, and were left with phone calls or drive-bys through the window or small glimmers of doorways. In a time when we wanted more and more every day to embrace those closest to us, our older American population was left isolated. We have before us today a proclamation proclaiming May 2021 is Older Americans Month in Marion County. This proclamation is really a celebration of the incredible resiliency our older American population shows on a regular basis. Even while being segregated from family, I have heard stories of this amazing part of our population producing masks and kits for first responders and being present in the lives of people, even when physical presence was more challenging. As a county, we owe such a large debt of gratitude for your part in this community, the things you sacrificed in the missed opportunities. Please know we see you. We are committed to continuously engaging and supporting Marion County's older American population and celebrate the incredible contributions you always provide, but even more so in the last year. As life returns to normal, we strive to bring better home and community-based services to you in order to support independent living and also continue welcoming you into and embracing you in the community through events and activities. I am honored to be a part of the proclamation and really want to emphasize how incredible, resilient, and necessary you are to the fabric of Marion County. Thanks for being here, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Welcome, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Just introduce yourself to the record, please.
I'm Marilyn Daly Blair, and I'm the Director of Center 50+ for the City of Salem.
So, do you want to share with us about your last year and the impacts of those that are served by Center 50+ and maybe some positive things?
Absolutely. Well, I have lots of positives to say. First, I just want to say that, you know, in terms of our nation, the volunteer structure that is provided by older adults is a value to the economy of $77 billion. And that is just older adults contributing to the nonprofits, to civic engagement, to volunteering in schools. They are some... They are really the backbone of not only the nation, but I just want to bring it to Marion County and the City of Salem. We believe, if you look around, older adults are serving on budget committees. They are many small business owners. They're volunteering in schools. They are the backbone of Center 50+. And on a normal year, over 425 volunteers give 100,000 hours of service, not just at the location on Portland Road, but volunteering in nonprofits throughout the community. So, this is a group of people that have been committed to serving the community for their entire lives. And I look at the COVID, COVID time. Here, we're tucking people away, and we're trying to keep everyone safe, but we still had 165 seniors step forward and say, "I will deliver meals. I will make phone calls. I will visit. I will put on my masks and gloves, and I will help," because that is what they are known for. And just in six months, our volunteers gave 13,000 hours of service. They served over 1,000 seniors a week and over 22 community care settings, reaching out and doing everything possible. Why was that such a challenge? Well, everything else turned to virtual. And 50% of my general population that come to Center 50+, which is about 11,000 people, 50% do not turn to technology as their number-one communication source. So, it made it even more important that we could respond to our older adults in a way that they could still connect, and it's not through technology. It's through FaceTime. It's through phone calls. It's through a clearing voice. Today, I have Linda Schellenberg, who is our President, as you announced, and then our Volunteer of the Year, Kristi Bowman. And I brought them in. They are two amazing examples of people that just said, "What can I do? How can I help?" Senior helping seniors. I do want to leave it with all of you today. Senior loneliness and isolation is an epidemic. It started way before COVID-19. It was exasperated during COVID-19, and it is not going to be solved quickly. And so, we just are so thankful that you're saying today, "We value older adults. We recognize you. We see you, and we're here to support you." And we want to just continue to do the good work because we have to keep that population healthy, safe, so that they can continue to serve our community. But safe and healthy does not mean not engaged. It means connected. It means included. And I think today's proclamation just reaffirms that as a county and as a city, we value this population, and we're going to do everything we can to encourage their ongoing participation. So, thank you so much for that, and I appreciate this.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you so much for being here and for all your work.
Have you guys visited the Center 50+?
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm definitely not 50+. But I met Marilyn a while ago. I don't know how many years ago. Went over to their building. I was hoping to help her on a fundraiser. I don't remember what it was called, but it was like Boots and Boogies or something.
Yes.
It was some kind of a fancy dance fundraiser that I could get behind. And I was really impressed with what they have available in the center just for activities. I have to say that someday I hope to use the wood shop. I think it's fantastic.
If I could just... I briefly just ask real quickly. One of the things that's come out of this whole process is the desire to encourage seniors to help seniors and their neighbors. And so, stay tuned, but as we roll out Villages... Villages Network is encouraging seniors to connect with seniors in their neighborhoods so they can support each other during natural disasters, COVID-19, just getting to the store in a general, normal day. So, age-friendly communities, we're pushing forward for that, but encouraging greater networks of seniors spread out so they don't have to only come to Center 50+ to make that connection. Thank you.
Sounds fantastic.
Yeah, the center's not only for 50+, but we had a joint... It was a land use joint public hearing there. I want to say this is like three years ago for the bridge. Well, excuse me, the not bridge.
The not bridge.
And that night, we had Kaiser, we had Salem, we had Polk County and Marion County all in the room. And so, I mean, we've been there for town halls with our U.S. Senators, and it's just a great place that people can gather and use for a lot of reasons. It's a great community gathering place. And thank you for making that. It's really, really impressive. Yeah, so, do we want to go ahead and... You want to make that motion?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move to approve a proclamation designating the month of May as Older Americans Month in Marion County.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, go ahead, and you can start it, too.
All right. This matter came before Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting on May 5th, 2021. Typically, May 2021 is Older Americans Month in Marion County, whereas the citizens of Marion County include numerous older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas Marion County is committed to engaging and supporting older Americans, their families, and caregivers, and acknowledging their many ongoing valuable contributions to society. And?
Whereas we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter one's age, and whereas Marion County can enrich the lives of older individuals in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor.
Now, therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners proclaims... Does hereby proclaim May 2021 as Older Americans Month in Marion County. We urge residents to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital members of the community. Signed and dated, 5th day of May, 2021. So, we have a proclamation here. I... Do either of your guests want to come up and make comments?
They don't. They do.
Nope. I'm going to go down there and take a picture with them.
So, you know, one thing, the word, the question comes up a lot to all of us, and I know specifically to me is like, "When are you going to retire?" And I think that's a man-made concept. It's not something that in the world was ever there before, I don't know, somebody said, "Hey, retire." What's retire mean? And I think of this when I answer people. It's like, you know, when people just get in their motorhomes and drive off into the sunset, we miss an asset. We miss a world of experience and an asset. And I don't know what retirement means, but I know that maybe someday I'll do something different, but I'll always be able to serve somebody else. And I think that's what we heard today, and that's what I want to really emphasize as we recognize our older adults that are doing this service, because they have this huge, huge experience and asset to give back. And you described a lot of that, what's happened during COVID. So, thank you very much, and I want to thank all those that are here today and for their service. And I hope I get to continue to serve in some way, too, as an older person, as long as I stay healthy.
Yeah.
Fantastic. All right. Want to join me for a picture?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, it's not the wonderful...
Yes. You want to come over here?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, who are we looking at first?
Yes.
Matt? Okay, picture.
Yes.
Okay, Lyle on the left.
And then?
Oh, then Jessica.
We have to have five people take pictures because one of them will come out, right?
One, two, three.
Or 10.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, we'll see you in December.
Oh, I didn't know.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it for your time.
Keep wanting to go to this chair. I feel like it should be sitting up there.
I did send this email at 8:00 last night to Brenda. I was catching up on email, looking at the board session, and I go, "Remind me that to declare a conflict of interest." And she did.
I think it means something different.
What?
Conflict of interest. I do not think it means what you think it means.
I know. In fact, along those lines, I was... They were trying to appoint somebody to the Detroit Lake Foundation, John Engel Shelly's.
Oh, yes.
And he said he couldn't do it because there's a conflict between her being on City Council and him being on the foundation. And I said, "Are you... Either of you going to personally benefit from that?" No, you're not. There's no conflict here.
Yeah, it's pretty often...
It's crazy.
Like, if somebody disagrees with somebody, they'll say they have a conflict. Because you disagree with them does not make that a conflict.
Right. Okay, we're on the consent calendar. It's a really long one. You're lucky today.
Well, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the consent calendar then. Under Public Works, schedule a final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance for May 12, 2021, for comprehensive plan amendment, zone change, property line adjustment, CPZCPLA, case number 21-001, Wing Properties LLC, and Shane and Tracy Meyerhofer.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion and second on the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, and our only action item today is...
My favorite public spokesperson.
Consider approval of a purchase order.
You can't have favorites. You're a Commissioner.
He has Ryan as a favorite.
She can definitely have a favorite.
I didn't say Ryan was my favorite. I said, "I love it when he comes because he shows movies." But since...
I have that for you.
Lonnie's heard that, so now look at this. We're in a movie. Okay, let me read this. Let me get control of this. All right. Consider approval of a purchase order agreement with Traffic Safety Company in the amount of $117,768.29 for the one-time purchase of replacement school zone flasher equipment from the State of Washington Cooperative Contract. It's all yours.
Good morning. For the record... I have that for you.
Lonnie's heard that, so now look at this, we're in a movie. Okay, let me read this. Let's, let me, let me get control of this group. All right. Consider approval of a purchase order agreement with Traffic Safety Company in the amount of $117,768.29 for the one-time purchase of replacement school zone flasher equipment from the State of Washington Cooperative Contract. It's all yours.
Good morning. For the record, Lonnie Radke, Public Works, and?
Dawn Alexander, Public Works.
Thank you, good to see you. I don't know if this is appropriate, but before we get started on this topic, I would like to take a moment to really commend you for this designation of the Older Americans' Month, and to really give Marilyn a huge shout out. My mom is, one of her volunteers, and has been for a few years since she's been retired. And she, pre-COVID, went through a pretty severe anxiety issue. And I tell you that Center 50+ is almost single-handedly what pulled her out of, of her, of her spot. Marilyn is amazing, she promotes a wonderful environment. My mom cannot say enough wonderful things about Marilyn, and what she does for the whole community, not just at Center 50+, but really for the whole community. And I know she's been missing them greatly through COVID. So I just, I don't, like I said, I don't know if that was appropriate to bring it up right now, but it is incredible what she's doing with all, everybody there, so.
Thank you for sharing that.
And now, back to our topic at hand. We are going to be talking to you about school flashing beacons and some replacements that we need to make. I'm sure folks have seen these out and about. These are flashing beacons that are installed in school zones. They indicate when the speed limit 20 is enforceable. And the, the beacons themselves are effective at getting attention of motorists to make sure that they're seeing that they need to slow down to 20. And then there's also the enforceable element as well. The difference between these, the flashing beacons and the signage that, that accompanies it is that we're able to more closely tailor the enforceable reduction down to the actual school start and dismissal times, and we also closely tailor the locations to make it more effective for the motorists. If we, excuse me, if we have it going all day and motorists aren't seeing children, there may be less inclined to think that they really need to follow, even though it's still enforceable. But when we have these shorter periods and they're, and they're seeing students and families out and about during those times, then they're more inclined to follow the, the signs. These units are solar-powered, and some of the technology is remotely programmable. And they're often, or they, all of ours are now accompanied with tattletale lights so that the enforcement can be done in both directions, so they can know when they're, when they're on.
So does that mean that on the backside, an officer can see like a blinking light to determine?
Yep, there's a, there's a blue light that, that lets them know, so that, so that there's no question.
Okay.
So Marion County, our records show that we started installing around 2009, but it's possible it was slightly earlier. We currently have 24 pairs of beacons at 22 schools. This is a pretty rough map, just to give you an idea of, of where we, where we have them. The 24 pairs also includes two new locations that we've installed in this last year in Sublimity and Pratom. And I have to say, they're incredibly popular. Once, once they are in, schools and families are quite vocal when they're not working, understandably.
I recall that happening over on Hazel Green.
Yes, yes.
We heard about that.
Yes. And I have to say, I'm really impressed with how quickly, Dawn is our school flasher coordinator, and how quickly Dawn was able to work with our operations division at Public Works. So that was the bridge crew, and even the sign shop was out, and, and the radio shop might have even been involved as well. It takes a lot of hands to help, to help get each component done. And we did that, wow, as quickly as we possibly could, and used some, some solutions, some, some alternates that we, we don't normally do, we tried to get creative. So it went well, and I will say, the school has reached out and sent us some, some fun pictures from all the kids that showing their thank you. So it was really nice to get that. So some of the challenging, challenges that we're facing right now are that, remember, we've got 24 pairs out there. It's, it's, it's not a great number, but we're working with four software platforms. And actually, as of a few months ago, we had a fifth, but we were able to, to eliminate that. So it gets confusing, it's a little tough to, to maintain, but the big thing is that we've got some obsolete technology out there that is no longer able to be repaired. We can't just go in and replace a part. It just, those, when those systems go down, we have to completely replace the system. And even though all of our systems now have the capability, or at least they did at one point, to have remote connections, a lot of them are not reliable. And so we, we have to install, all of the hardware is up at a bucket truck height right now, or the older systems are, and we have to install cables that come down so, so Dawn can take his computer out and troubleshoot it. And it's taking a great amount of time that it really shouldn't have to. And we're spending a lot of time, over the years, the amount of time that has been spent on these repairs has been completely ridiculous. It's, we've, we've spent so much that we could have paid for these systems to be replaced, I'm sure. And the big, the big concern there is that it pulls, it's such a priority, if one, one of these goes out, that it pulls Dawn, or our, our sign shop, our radio shop, and, and our bridge crew, it pulls them off of whatever they need to be doing, which are already priority issues. And so really, if we can get that time back, there's such a, there's, there's so much more that we could be doing. Then one of the other challenges we're faced with is at each school, they were installed as a primary-secondary relationship. So if the primary fails, it is what's pushing the data or the information to the secondary location, and so that secondary doesn't work anymore, so it's possible to have one failure, but then they both don't work. So we will be moving toward just primary everywhere, so it helps with, with maintenance and troubleshooting in the future. Would you like to talk at all about any recent challenges that you've been faced with?
Sure.
Okay.
So yes, this year's been a little interesting with COVID. The schools, of course, weren't in school for some time, and they've, they've all had sort of unique schedules to, to, once they started up, getting those schedules into the beacons was a challenge, as like Lonnie said. Some of these, we had to physically go out and push schedules out through USB cables. Others were able to connect through cellphone modems. However, a lot of the cellphone modems, we, we replaced almost every cellphone modem here and over the, just to get a lot of these operational. The company that we were using switched from Verizon to AT&amp;T, and so we, that we had to switch over those modems. So again, technology as it advances, especially the modem which communicates with the beacons so we can push schedules and do the programming, is critical. So through the help of the radio shop, the bridge crew, and the sign shop, we were able to get out with the bucket truck and replace those modems, and get all of our school beacons operational for this startup of, of the school year. I'm hoping the next school year will be much smoother as we transition into the new systems and are able to get those installed and programmed, so. Yeah, and the big challenge when you have a control cabinet that's on top of the pole is that it does require a bucket truck, which in a lot of locations then requires traffic control as well. So it's a, it's a huge effort just to get out and do work on these beacons in some locations. The new beacons we're, we're moving towards all have the cabinet, control panels are going to be at ladder heights. We're trying to put them down lower on the posts so that the radio shop can get out and troubleshoot those with just a, a step ladder, and not require traffic control and the bucket truck.
Great. Yeah, we didn't, I didn't really go into details on the remote connection and how, how important that is, but as, as Dawn was indicating, that's how we program the calendars and the schedules. And one thing that's really nice about having that capability to do from your desk is, for instance, on snow days, when we need to change things, we have not been able to do that in the past because it would have required somebody going out to individual, you know, plugging in, and, and you, by the time you were done, it would, it would be past the time that you needed it, right? So, so this will give us, it will really improve the, the safety, it'll improve the program. So we're here today for a request for our purchase order. This is getting us started, this will be, the 10 pairs that we would like to purchase are, it's a little over half of what we need to replace in the, in the next couple of years. We have a phased approach. This is the first chunk, we didn't want to buy everything all at once because it takes a, a great deal of storage, and we just, we just thought we'd, we'd, we'd phase the purchasing as well. But this is, this is the first step, and the biggest step.
Okay. I just want to say thank you for sharing your mom's story with us.
Sorry if it was long.
No, it's something that, that I think is so good.
It's like it's a short agenda, I can talk, I like.
Yeah. Well, and we, and we, I mean, we hire you because of your technical expertise, you're a fabulous engineer, but I think part of what makes Marion County so wonderful is that we all care so much about the community, right? So like, we want to do our jobs really well and be professionals, but it's also important to you that Center 50+ is a good place, and for your mom and for your family. And so I just, I'm glad that you shared that, so that people could, could see that, that side of you and Marion County. I think it really does make a difference, I do.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I agree, I feel like, I like both, I like all of this. I loved your statement about your mom. But I also particularly really care about these flashing beacons. As a mom of school-aged kids, when they're, when they go down, I kind of freak out. I'm like, you guys can't walk now, because people get kind of autopiloted to the controls and systems that is applied to traffic. And when those are on, I think it's, there's like an automatic sensor in our brains that say, oh, be on alert, there are children around, and that is really important. I, I can't imagine what the study shows as far as the number of lives maybe that have been saved from this, but I'm sure it's a lot. So thanks for all the work that you and Dawn and the rest of your team do for keeping our county safe, but mostly our kids.
It's the, you know, they're effective at slowing people down, and if you were to look at the graph, your stopping distance goes way up with every mile per hour you're driving. It's, it's exponential. It's, if you're going five miles per hour over, the, the ability to stop is, it's, it takes, it takes a lot more pavement. So anything we can do to slow in these areas to reduce the, the stopping distance, and yeah, it's, it's big. And, and we really do, this is, I, I think we have a lot of pride and responsibility for this program, and, and take on any time we get a call, we're doing all that we can to troubleshoot as quickly. But one of the things that, it's just so hard right now, the, the previous staff that had to work with these and try to, we, we joke that it's a Frankenstein system because it's just, the amount of time that, that has been spent is just, it's ridiculous, and, and stressful, and, and is not, you know, it's, it's not effective, they're not getting turned on as quickly either, which is obviously the biggest goal. So this is, this is going to be huge for the program.
Awesome.
So I noticed, I don't go, I used to drive out Liberty Road, I used to live out two and a half miles south of Coomer, and the other day I was driving out there to drop off a trailer at, at my nephew's house. And when I went by the, the elementary school, I noticed there are lights right above the school, right? I mean, you went through the school, you hit the school zone right at Skyline, I think there's a, there's Skyline and Liberty flashing light, but then it looked like new lights that are right above the school, right in front of the school.
You have beacon arms that come out?
Yeah, they come out.
Beacon arms that come over.
And, and I thought, well, this is interesting, but there was no crosswalk right there. And is it just, like, I'm in the middle of the school, and now these other lights are there? Is that, is that part of this new system?
I'm not familiar, well, I've been by that, that's in the city of Salem, so I'm not sure what they're doing.
We could definitely look into what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk with the city and see what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I thought, I thought, okay, well, I'm in the middle of the school zone, if I miss that one, okay, I'm still going fast, maybe that's to, to alert me, but it was almost too late if I, if I saw that.
Well, so the beacon arm out there specifically is because you can see it from, as you're coming down the hills, from afar, so it's noticing you. And then in the school bond projects that we, the district has been working on, they're working on different safety measures, and that one's not new in the recent bond, but it has to do with drawing your attention from far away, notifying that there, right up there, is going to be a crowd of kids. And kids cross, they don't follow crosswalk rules. I'd love to see that they do, but they don't. So it's just an additional warning station.
What do you mean, kids?
Well, okay, maybe you, I follow the rules.
I know you do, yeah, right.
I look both ways before I run across the road.
No comment. All right, so we need a, we need a motion.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move to approve a purchase order agreement with Traffic Safety Supply Company in the amount of $117,768.29 for the one-time purchase of replacement school zone flasher equipment from the State of Washington Cooperative Contract.
And I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn, good to see you. I think, I think, I almost want to say the last time I saw you was like at Mount Frankie when you were, you were running the ash pile up there.
Yeah, I used to, I used to take care of the ash pile when I was in, in Environmental Services.
Yeah.
And then they moved me over to engineering, so.
You've been over there for, what, four years or so?
Uh, in, in engineering?
Yeah.
No, it'll be two years this October.
All right.
But, yeah, we're still working on ADA stuff as well, so hopefully get back to you on that plan as well, but some things have happened, like COVID and fires and.
Ice storms?
Ice storms, yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day, have a great Cinco de Mayo. I think that's why we're all maybe.
My grandson's playing T-ball up in Kaiser. Let's read the calendar before we get lost. Whose turn is it?
Probably mine.
I think I read it last week, I think.
It's been a bit, how about I just do it?
Go ahead.
Okay, today is May 5th, and right now, it's, well, it's not 9:00 AM, it's, I don't know what time it is, it's 9:47, and we are at board session, Senator hearing room, first floor, 555 Court Street. After this, at 11 o'clock, we have a Board of Commissioners policy meeting upstairs on the fifth floor, 555 Court Street. And then at 12 o'clock, we have the Woodburn Marion County meeting, which is virtual. And at 4 o'clock, we have a FEMA briefing for local officials, which is virtual. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 6th, at 9:30, we have the Department head elected officials meeting upstairs on the fifth floor in the Commissioners Boardroom. And then at 1:00 PM tomorrow, we have the Association of Oregon County's Veteran Steering Committee, which is virtual. And then tomorrow, at 3 o'clock, we have the Association of Oregon County's Health and Human Services Steering Committee, which is virtual. And on Friday, the 7th, at 8:00 AM, we have the Association of Oregon County's Natural Resources Steering Committee, which is virtual. And then at 11:00 AM on Friday, the Association of Oregon County's Weekly COVID-19 Conference Call, which is virtual. And then at 1:00 PM on Friday, the 7th, the Association of Oregon County's Transportation and Community Development Steering Committee, which is virtual. And on Monday, the 10th, we, at 8:00 AM, the Association of Oregon County's Governance and Revenue Steering Committee, which is virtual. And then at 10:30 on Monday, the 10th, the Association of Oregon County's Public Safety Steering Committee, which is virtual. And on Monday at 11, excuse me, 1:30, Association of Oregon County's Legislative Committee, which is virtual. And then at 3:30 on Monday, the 10th, Association of Oregon County's Board of Directors meeting, which is virtual. On Tuesday, the 11th, at 9:30, management update, Commissioners Boardroom, fifth floor upstairs, 555 Court Street. And then at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, the 11th, we have Northwest Senior Disability Services Budget Committee meeting, which is virtual. And at 2:30 on Tuesday, the 11th, Health and Human Services Policy Group on the fifth floor, Commissioners Boardroom upstairs, 555 Court Street. And then on Wednesday, the 12th, we're back here at 9:00 AM for board session. And then at 2:00 PM on Wednesday, the 12th, we have the Union Gospel Mission Tour Discussion at the UGM at 255 Division Street in Salem. And then on Wednesday, the 12th, at 4:00 PM, a FEMA briefing for local officials, which is virtual. This mask makes my face hot. Just so you all know.
But, you know, I, I was just looking over to make sure legal counsel was here today.
Yes.
Legal counsel was present, yes.
Scott, good to see you.
Thank you. Good to be here.
We want to, I got to be careful what I say, but I want to thank our legal counsel for all the good work that you've been doing through this whole pandemic and lawsuits and. and, um, I guess we can say we had a little bit of a victory on the public, yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's public, right?
I think that's.
Yeah, well, anyways, a little bit of victory.
I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't know if you saw, but OSHA finalized rules requiring masks as a permanent rule. Like, it's crazy.
That's not positive.
So I don't think we're, I don't think we're done with the.
No, but I'm, no, I get it, but I'm just saying that that all the things that that your department's been doing to keep us going, but, yeah, there's more, there's, there's more to come.
I'm also grateful. I don't, I'm sorry, I probably was, uh, not talking out of turn, but I, it was just on my mind because, you know, I was excited that the governor decided to allow our restaurants to reopen again, annoyed that it seemed like that whole thing was nonsensical. Um, but then now she's saying we're gonna have permanent mask mandates regard, I mean, I just, like, oh, boy, here we go again.
Yeah, so thank you, Scott, for being here. I know you were silent over there today because we didn't go down some path that you had to lasso us and redirect us.
That's why I'm here.
Well, you do a great job.
Yeah. Great. Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Yeah, go.
I want to say, look at this shirt. I'm gonna use these Wednesday opportunities.
Support local.
To just make statements every once in a while because I'm not cool enough to do it every week. Yesterday, um, afternoon, I had an appointment with my daughters downtown Salem and there's a boutique called Felicity Boutique that I used to frequent, um, a few years ago. And I was parked in front of there and they had this shirt in the window and I thought, that is a message to me because I'm so pissed off at our governor and the fact that she just keeps squashing local businesses. I'm gonna go buy it. And then I think I'm just gonna say that my purchase was helpful in her decision-making because about an hour later, I got that ridiculous email saying that she's now opening the counties again. And I was like, wait a second, is this a yo-yo? Like, what's happening? So frustrated. Appreciate that she, you know, relinquished us from her oversight, but it's just nonsense.
My favorite tweet yesterday was, uh, a report from KGW said, this must be the fun part of the roller coaster.
I saw that. I totally saw that. It's like, wait, hold on, it's gonna happen.
What, what did it say?
This must be the fun part of the roller coaster. KGW reporter.
KGW, an anchor. It's on his Facebook page. I also saw it. Quite happy about that. Will not call him out by name so he can avoid any controversy, but.
You just, you know, when, when the TV anchors are saying stuff like that, that that's really, they really jumped the shark.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's more of an opinion than.
Yeah, I guess I get, I'm a little surprised. Um, I think we said last week that we were all a bit bitter about the change in her daily count of the metrics because it was a Sunday to Saturday and then she moved it Sunday to Monday to try to acquire those couple of days to shut these fifteen counties down. And then she did the same thing this week, which I guess is consistency for her. But what seems so odd to me in this is that it's a fifteen percent number, right, that pushes us into extreme, but the number I read yesterday was fourteen point nine percent.
I think the overlaying problem is that it seems like she's cherry picking the numbers to get the outcome she wants.
Right.
So when she wants these restaurants closed, she finds a metric to close the restaurants. When she wants them open, she finds a different metric to close the, to open the restaurants. And like, that sort of unilateral, uh, rule by fiat is, it's, it's un-American. Like, that's literally not what we do here. We have a legislative process. We have a rulemaking process. We have processes that people can go through. Having one person just cherry pick, you know, data and then, you know, impact massive swaths of your economy and people's lives, it's not okay.
On the bright side, she did go and inquire a bunch of money from the legislature to help small businesses and, and they're sit, they're allowing counties to, uh, utilize the movement of that money. So yesterday.
It's two million bucks.
Yeah, yesterday, we got notice from DAS that we can apply for our dollars and then our team will figure out how they're gonna disseminate that, which makes sense to me because I think the local level government, uh, organizations have a better handle on what's happening. So we'll be seeing that in the coming days.
It's good and we'll do it, but it does trouble me that it's like, we're gonna make this bad rule and then we'll just write you a big check.
Right.
Right? I don't think that's a good pattern for for the government to get into.
Right. Oh, agreed, totally. Today is Cinco de Mayo. This is the second time I'm gonna say that. I am a fan of street tacos, so hopefully there's plenty of them around to get my hands on today because I plan to do a look.
Is it Gordita? I think Gorditas is a restaurant nearby, real good.
Yes.
Great burritos.
La Margarita is another one around the corner that I love.
Yeah. We got some good options here.
Yes, lunchtime is coming soon, I'm sure of it. Keep looking at my phone. All right. Well, you want us to keep bantering or are you ready to call it?
Uh, I know, I'm, I'm good. I, uh, um, no, it's just a lot happening.
There's a lot happening.
The lake's coming up like almost a foot yesterday and there was no rain.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, um, so, uh, when I left this morning, it was a beautiful, you know, beautiful day up there. Drive by there and you can see the docks floating, you know, Scott's place is still not there, but, um, we got a little rain coming. Um, there is, um, still a lot of activity going on. Um, I think, uh, we all had this discussion about the, the harvesting of, um, salvaged timber and all that, um, going on. We can't afford to stop the, the momentum that's happening. So I know that, it, I, I think Brian sent us that article about ODOT hiring some, uh, neutral.
Local arborists.
Arborists to, to make sure that, um, things aren't being, you know, over the top. But I just, uh, am impressed with, um, you know, it seemed like it took forever to get started, but now that it's started, you can really see things being cleaned up. Today, I went, when I went through Gates, they're still working on the main street there, you know, Highway twenty-two and Gates. Um, you know, they've got the, they, it's really a great operation when they, they, you watch them doing this cleanup stuff. So, um, uh, yeah, every day, it seems like things are getting a little bit, a little bit better. There was only, I, I said this to somebody, uh, oh, Elizabeth texted me last night, asked me if somebody was with somebody, uh, during the, because I testified at the Detroit Lake, or the Detroit City Council, um, on, I just think that they should continue to make sure that councilors can attend via Zoom, right? They don't have to physically be someplace because some of us live up there and some of us live down here or wherever. And, um, and Elizabeth texted me and said, was so-and-so with, uh, you and Elaine DeGeorge? And I said, no, Elaine and I were the only two animals in Detroit last night. There was nobody there. Yet there's all this equipment sitting around and it's, it's just a weird feeling. But then during the day, it's like.
It feels like there's real momentum.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That's great.
Um, so the store, Dean said, I saw him, he said, they're gonna try to get that open Memorial Weekend.
Right.
Um, Elaine's working on trying to get her little.
Half of the motel.
Food establishment open that weekend and half of her, her motel.
Is that the Connor's Barbecue or is that different?
Well, it won't be Connor's, it'll be hers. She's, she's doing something different.
I see, okay.
Yeah, she took, gave me a tour of that last night. So, yeah, it's, um, it's good up there. And then even Ga, you can see Gates, you know, getting cleaned up. And now you can actually see, when you drive down, you can see the FEMA, um, housing project.
Hmm.
From twenty-two because the trees are.
Balled down, yeah, yeah.
Burned and, um, and I know we're dealing with the, uh, the road issue up there. People are trying to get down to the river through, um, I think that's Senator Gerard's Road.
Yeah.
Where, uh, that, where his house burned down. Um, and I know Public Works is working on that. So we have our challenges, but it seems like everybody's doing the best they can to try to, you know, help, help people get what they need and calm them down and, um.
That report that we received a week ago about the, um, fines that were being administered up the North Fork and the number of counties outside of Marion that were really helping draw.
Oh, that was, that was the safety corridor.
Oh, it was the safety corridor?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was up the canyon. Okay.
Sergeant Wilkinson stopped by my house last night just to make sure I was alive.
Oh.
And he was just in the neighborhood and, and I, we talked a little bit. I'm wondering if we can, we talked about that.
Yes.
And we need to get those, the same stats from the North Corridor.
Yeah.
Where the people are, um, coming from that we're having to educate.
It's, and we're, we're not, nowhere near done yet, but it is, um, it, it's nice to look back and see, like, there are these big things that we've been working on that, that were hard and, and we sort of accomplished some of them, you know? Like, the water system in Detroit was, was hard, but now people have water. And, uh, the FEMA, you know, having housing, those FEMA trailers, getting the FEMA houses up there, finding a location, making sure people who needed them can get them, that was a big lift. We, you know, that got done. Um, you know, hassling ODOT to get the cleanup stuff ready and, and get moving and get going, you know, that was a lift and that's getting done. So it is sort of nice being on this side, looking, or even, you know, saying, we don't, we're gonna have to close North Fork Road, um, we're gonna have to have these ordinances so that people who are recovering can have the space to recover. Um, that was a lift, that got done. So it's nice to sort of see these individual discrete projects all coming together and, and making the space a space where recovery can really move pretty fast. Because I remember talking to the gal from Paradise and she said, you know, it's four years and we just had our first house completed, right? I remember being like, oh, my gosh, like, we can't wait four years to have one house completed. And it just seems like we're way ahead of schedule, um, from what, what they were talking about because we've done all these different discrete projects and put the pieces together to have a space where people can just really move forward with cleaning up and rebuilding[1666.54]